Good evening, everyone. I'm going to reconvene the Board of Supervisors September 6th, Board meeting.
Seventh.
Seventh, thank you. I'm confused, is it Labor Day or not?
And also, if it will please you, Madam Chairman, all the members of the Building Committee are present, and I would call that meeting to order as well.
Thank you for that. One thing I would like to ask my peers on the Board is if we could amend the agenda in the very beginning. We lost a wonderful man in the county over the weekend, and the Virginia General Assembly adjourned in his name this evening, or this afternoon, I should say. And Delegate Webber was kind enough to share that with me. I would like to play it for everyone here.
So is that a...
That was a motion to amend the agenda?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you. Now hopefully, technology will work.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise for a motion and would like to speak to that motion. The delegate has the floor. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, you and I have had the opportunity to represent the close-knit community of Rappahannock County. I am proud to say that the Rappahannock Wire moves faster than Facebook. Unfortunately, the news that I received was... wasn't very good, in that the county of Rappahannock lost another great, and another great person. I characterize this gentleman as basically a bulldog with a Jack Russell attitude, and he was just a heck of a guy, a big supporter. His stepson is one of the best people that I know, as well as his wife Karen. Born in 1968 to Greg and Sandy Dick of Front Royal, Virginia, Mark was a lifelong resident of the Commonwealth. As a star wrestler, quarterback, wide receiver, and tennis player for the Warren County Wildcats, and matriculated to the Virginia Military Institute in 1986, where he played tennis and held various leadership positions in the Corps of Cadets. He was commissioned as an officer upon graduation in 1990, in the lead-up to the first Gulf War. Served 21 years as a medical logistics officer during rotations in Germany following the end of the Cold War, as well as Kuwait, Iraq, to support Operation Iraqi Freedom. He ended his career as the program manager for the Joint Trauma Analysis and Prevention of Injury in Combat, working with stakeholders to study and put into effect measures to protect our troops in battle. He retired in 2011 as a Lieutenant Colonel. Then, Mr. Speaker, or, and Mr. Speaker, he married his elementary school crush, Karen Bowling, and welcomed her son Alex into his life as his own son in 2000. They lived on their farm at Flint Hill, and Mark enjoyed retirement by golfing, fishing, hunting, and spending time with friends, and occasionally harassing me. Mark loved his country, his family, and his Commonwealth more than anything, and he will be dearly missed. The Commonwealth lost a true patriot and a Virginia gentleman. So, Mr. Speaker, I live that the House of Delegates adjourn in the honor and memory of Lieutenant Colonel Mark Dick.
Delegate Webber moves that when the House adjourns today, adjourn in the honor and memory of Lieutenant Colonel Mark Dick. As many as favor that motion will please rise. The motion is agreed to.
Mark was a regular at the tavern, so it's extra hard.
Thank you so much for sharing that, Debbie.
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you for allowing me to. All right, let's get to the exciting part of the evening. One thing we need to make sure everybody in here knows, there was a little bit of not correct information in the newspaper. There has never been said, as far as I can tell, and Christine, Ms. Smith, you can say this as well as you did earlier today, none of us have ever said we're going to tear down the courthouse. So I don't know where it came from, but...
It's not going to happen.
If you're standing, or you're sitting here waiting for that to be an issue, you don't need to. Ms. Smith, do you want to...
I just wanted to echo your comments, and I said it in our roundtable discussion at the earlier meeting, then unfortunately, I think something was printed that was sort of misunderstood, or I'm not exactly sure where the disconnect is. But there never has been, and never will be, I believe, a discussion on this Board of Supervisors, or on our Building Committee, where there was any idea that we would tear down this courthouse, demolish this courthouse, any of those things. That has never, ever been on the table. In fact, it has always been exactly the polar opposite. Every member of this board and of the Building Committee has dedicated ourselves to try to figure out ways to keep these wonderful historic buildings vital and useful for many, many years to come. And that has always been our approach to these buildings. It has always been done with utmost respect for them and their historical nature, and also for you as our taxpayers, that we approach it in a responsible way and do it correctly. And I hope you all will take that to heart, and know that we have never had any intention of doing any damage or taking these buildings down. I'm very fond of them. I'm going to mimic Mrs. Jewell from our earlier meeting. My first memory in this courthouse is getting my driver's license here when I turned 16. And my older son, his memory of this courthouse is getting his driver's license here when he turns 16. And Lord willing, next January, when my younger son turns 17, he'll get his driver's license in this courthouse as well. So I just, I wanted to clear the error of that first, because I do think it has been very unfortunate that there has been some information misunderstood somewhere along the way. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I open public comment, please note that we do, we did add, Ms. Smith recommended, and we all agreed to add a public comment opportunity after the presentation. So if you want, if you're here for the buildings, you might want to wait until after you see what they are actually doing, or recommending. All right, public comment period, I will open, and as you're recognized, if you'll come up and give us your name and your district, and we'll recognize you.
Just before you do that, I see Mr. Frazier has joined you...
Oh, good.
...electronically, and for the purposes of the policy, I just want to make it clear for the minutes that he's joining you for personal reasons, from an area here within the state. He was here earlier today, but he's called away for work this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm Mike Millen from the Hampton District, and personally, I found the article in the Avenue as confusing and contradictory. I'd say plan would be more informative than misleading elevations or facades. A plan showing courtrooms, offices, waiting rooms, public entrances, secure rooms is important, and addresses the primary purpose of this process. The exterior should be secondary, except when it comes to saving significant historical assets.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Alan, who's left to say this, sir?
You've got to come up. The reason you got to come up to the mic is there are people on Zoom and all that good stuff, so...
So, you stole all my thunder. Thank you, Supervisor Smith, for reassuring me, because I came in here in full dungeon, ready to yell and scream and shoot my mouth off. But since I'm already here, I might as well shoot my mouth off before I hear the facts of the presentation. And just let me say that I'm thrilled that we're... First of all, shame on all of us, okay? Shame on this community for not preserving these buildings when we had a chance to do it. Shame on the newspaper for publishing such a stupid article that got me all riled up over, I hope, nothing. And then shame on the Building Committee for putting together a ridiculous-looking, you know, folder, whatever, I can't tell one side from the other, back from front, whatever. It all looks awful. It all looks like worse than the eighth-grade class at Rappahannock Elementary could draw in terms of courthouse buildings or anything like that. So I'm here already with a bias against whatever the position is. I hope to be changed by the end of this thing, but I think we can do better than that. And I hope that the plan does include some sort of preservation for this building and stabilizing it for the next century or two. That is first and foremost, and I will shut up and comment.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
Anybody else in the courtroom for this public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Is this not a courthouse?
It can be, but we're going to have the presentation, and then there's another public comment afterwards, so it might be best to wait, if that's your focus.
How long is the presentation?
Depends on how nosey we want to be for everybody.
Might so.
And I just want to also say, and, you know, the members of the Building Committee are here and certainly can participate as well...
Absolutely.
But I just wanted to say that folks need to understand that being on the Building Committee, it is our, it is our job to try to make some plans, to do some things that need to be done. And I don't, I would never shirk that responsibility. I, I've tried to carry it forward the best I can. And one thing we have been very vocal about and kept to this year is that we come back on a quarterly basis to deliver a report to our peers on the Board of our progress on the Building Committee, because we know how very vital it is throughout this entire process, that we bring everyone along with us. Because it is not a Board of Supervisors-only decision, and it is not a Building Committee decision, it is a Rappahannock County decision. And we have really tried, we were here in January, we were back again in May, here we are again in September. And I will commit to continuing to be involved at both levels with that planning. And I will just say, I do believe that there is a silver lining in this possible miscommunication, because one of the elements that has been missing throughout this process has been public engagement. And so while it didn't exactly come about the way that I would have chosen for it to come about, I am very heartened to see that there are so many people present here this evening that have such love for these buildings and the history of the county, and have an interest in doing the right thing going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So anyone else that would... Yes, sir.
Ron Macklin from Jackson District. I just want to make a couple of comments on the meeting you had this afternoon. First, I wanted to compliment you on your interrogation of the individual from the, and I can't remember the name exactly, of the phone company that's taking over Chantel, in that what I, what I saw is just the spectator, whatever, was sort of a talking head, and you guys asked him some tough questions, but unfortunately, the answers you got were sort of marketed answers. And we, as a community, have to understand that because we aren't, we don't make anybody any money, what they're telling us probably is never going to happen, and probably not so much going to change, but you guys are giving it your best shot, and the community appreciates that. And, and the other thing I would like to just make a quick comment on is that, and he's not here, but Mr. Frazier, and I probably shouldn't do this, but I'm going to do it, made comments to Gary Achilles today, which I felt were inappropriate, rude, uncalled-for, and demeaning. Mr. Kelly got up to just, you know, give you some information or whatever, and Mr. Frazier's treatment of him was inappropriate. Thank you.
We do our, thank you. We do our best to speak to the board, not an individual. Anybody else wishing to speak? That means everybody's staying. Good. All right, now we're going on to Zoom. Anyone in Zoom world wishing to speak during the public comment before the Building Committee Not seeing any hands. I'll close this public comment period. Move it into the agenda. Building Committee, new courthouse report.
Well, and I would just add as a preface, and we may want to hear from some other members of the Building Committee. At our last meeting in May, we reviewed the possibility of putting an addition onto the back of the courthouse for the purposes of meeting some of the space needs of the courthouse complex as it currently exists, and some of the security concerns of a courthouse in this particular building. And when we visited that question with the board, the direction was given that that was not really a way to proceed, because, well, there's a number of reasons, but there's all kinds of utilities located in the back of the courthouse that would have to be relocated. Court would be disrupted for an unknown period of time. There would be other offices affected by the work at that point, especially the Voters' Office. We have to be very wary of being careful during election seasons not to interfere with that, and a myriad of other reasons, not to mention the design was just clunky to put on a big addition on the back of this courthouse. And at the end of the day, we still didn't accomplish the square footage and the goals that we had as a county to make this a viable campus, and to also meet the needs of a modern courthouse. And to folks who are wondering why that's important, we, we do function as a courthouse currently in this location. There are many cautionary tales that we're surrounded by, where an historic courthouse has been told by a judge that it is not meeting the security concerns of a modern courthouse, and the courthouse must be changed. That is not something the county can say no to. If we are ordered by a judge to do certain things, then we must do it. The alternative would be we stopped having a courthouse in Rappahannock County. And as a board, we had always decided that keeping a courthouse in Rappahannock County was something that we all felt was necessary, and was essential to the county's character as much as our school system, or our volunteer fire and rescue system. And that was not something we wanted to sacrifice. And so the question becomes, if we are not going to put on an addition to this building, and in that process not accomplish what we need to do, and quite possibly open up more problems and ruin this building in this process, what are we going to do? And to that end, we've been talking with Mr. Vaughn from Wiley Wilson about a way forward for a possible new construction, an additional four acres that the county owns in the back of this property. Have I missed any details, Mr. Curry?
No, I don't think so.
So, and any members of the Building Committee that might want to be heard from, perhaps?
Do you want to introduce who's here from the Building Committee?
I, I should. We've got Dale Elkins, or Doug Elkins, I'm so sorry, from Piedmont District, Paige Glenny from Jackson District, and Dale Walters, I'm not sure who's...
Walters from Wakefield.
Oh, yeah, Wakefield District. So that's who all is here from the Building Committee.
And Mr. Frazier is online.
And Mr. Frazier is online, he's our chairman.
The one thing I wanted to add and build on what we said earlier is that Supervisor Smith noted the board has stated that they want to preserve this and the other historic buildings. They have backed that statement up with appropriating a million dollars into the FY23 budget to support that work. And the Building Committee is working hard to figure out how to best invest that with the right people to do the job correctly, so we're not doing it again in two or five years. So it's not just a statement, it's a financial backing to make it happen. So I don't think, in looking back through records with the county, and of course, I've only been here a short time, that a board has made that kind of investment in this, these historic buildings. So kudos to the board, and I look forward to working with the Building Committee to help invest those and turn those investments into preservation for another couple hundred years. Would that...
You took half of what I was going to say, but...
Do you want to go to Mike?
Paige Glenny, thank you, Gary. You did the hard part of what I was going to say. But in addition to that, at the last May meeting, I believe the board also approved proceeding with those contracts, so we're on that, so we're on that process. But the other point I want to make is, we, thanks again to Gary, we've established a Building Committee section on the county website, and attached to that is a link to the library and board docs, where you can see all the documents. So please look at that, you'll see the presentations that were made, and you'll have a better understanding of the rationale as to how we got to where we are. But anyway, just...
So those aren't aware of the website, pulled it up, under Government, you'll see Building Committee. Building Committee, you'll see Documents, a couple links that will get you to all of the documents that the Building Committee has presented to the Board of Supervisors, various site plans. There've been many versions of site plans that have come through the Building Committee. Some of those have been reported onto the board, and then kicked back and massaged, and got us to the point where we are now, which I don't know if other Building Committee members wanted to say anything at this point. Randy Vaughn from Wiley Wilson is prepared to share with everybody here in the board the current concept, concept, okay?
Say it again, concept.
These aren't building plans, we're not ready to put it to bid, this is a concept. Where does it fit? How could it shape? What could it look like? What functions do we need to have? And so his firm is capable of doing this, done in a number of different locations. And if the public rejects the look of this concept, then I guess the Building Committee and the architect will work hard with the Board of Supervisors to identify what concept might be appropriate and acceptable to the community. And I'm pretty sure everybody will not agree, so it'll be, it'll be work. Dave Wilson, Doug?
Who's next?
All right, Randy.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Randy Vaughn, I'm an architect with Wiley Wilson. I hail out of Lynchburg, Virginia, and I've been working with the committee now for well over a year on this project. So what you're going to see here tonight is something that's been a long time in the making. There's, the committee here, as you've all heard, has been very dedicated to this project and to the preservation of these buildings, as well as not just the buildings, but the community. I understand the concept that, you know, you get your driver's license here at the courthouse. Every one of you, as a citizen of this county, has had some kind of personal stake in this, in these buildings, and we take that very seriously, and as well as what I've heard throughout the Building Committee. So what my job is, is try to sift through all that information and help you guys make the right decision that's right for, for, for this location. So we began way back a year or more ago with doing a needs assessment, where we came in, talked with all of the folks here about how the building, what functions you wanted in it, how much space that would take, compared that to the state publishes a design guideline for these types of facilities, which are very much focused on security. If any of you've been into, even into this courthouse, when you come in the front door, you have to get screened to get in this building. So it, the, the idea is to create a safe work environment for the people who have to, the judges and the, and the court staff that have to work in the space, for the folks that have to use the court facilities, as well as the general public. So what we are looking at here in this building is that there really is, we need a lot of accessory spaces that do not currently exist in this building, and one of the reasons that we are proposing or have moved to the concept of a new building is so that we don't overwhelm this building by putting the little additions on here and little additions on there to, in destroying the character of it. So we want to preserve the character of this building, and so not only this building, but also the courthouse green and all the associated buildings, and even the, the Village of Washington here itself has been very much a focus of what we, that this committee has been telling me that's important to them, and we've tried to convey that. And my, my job is to try to take all of that information and sift it out and come up with a physical manifestation of it, so we'll go through that now. So I think it would be helpful...
Start with the site plan?
To start with the site plan, so we can kind of help everyone, and this, what we're seeing here...
Just to be clear, this information is uploaded to the meeting agenda portal, board docs, it's available for everybody to download anytime you want, now or later. It'll also be on the link from, that Mr. Glenny mentioned earlier, for the Building Committee.
So what you're seeing here is the topographic survey that was done for the project, and all the squiggly lines there represent the fall of the contours of the property. So as you might imagine, it's a pretty steep hill that drops off down the back of the courthouse here. The, the black hatch boxes are the various buildings themselves. The one that the cursor is on is the Clerk's Office. The Historic Courthouse is the middle building there. The next is the Commissioner of Revenue and the Voter Register's Office, and then the Treasurer's Office there. You'll see that's the, the old county administration building on the corner there, and then the old church building, which is sort of across the street, which is all county-owned property. So the image that you see here, the color is the, where we're at with the development of the site plan here. So if you can understand, or just to kind of give you a point of reference, this building we're in here is roughly 40 feet by 50 feet, that's 2,000 square feet of space on two floors, so you've got 4,000 square feet of space here in this, in this building. As we have shown the building here to accommodate all the court functions, as well as the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, this building that we're seeing here is going to be 20,000 square feet plus. So it's a large, much larger building in a group of very much smaller buildings. So some of the articulation that we're showing in the building, the offsets in it, is to try to kind of help break that mass down, and not make it a big block building that, a big blocky building that's sitting in the courthouse square here. The green part of the building is the main mass of the building, and that kind of peachy color is some of the lower roof area. So this footprint is around, somewhere around 10,000 to 12,000 square feet in area, and it would be two floors of, of structure there, which would give us somewhere around 20,000 to 22,000, 23,000 square feet total of area. So one of the things that we really worked on was where to place the building. And we didn't want it to face away from Gay Street. We felt it was important that it front Gay Street and continue to have that presence of a court facility, because it is a symbol of county government here. So we don't want to completely ignore the fact that it is a important building, but yet we don't want it to, we didn't necessarily want it to try and compete with this beautiful historic building that you've got here today. So the location that we have come up with here is in this place, the, the field here off to your, to the right of where we're sitting here, as the, the monument, the old Washington, little stone Washington monument is there, and the street currently ends now, and there's a driveway that comes around back behind the building. So what we're envisioning here is to really rethink that entire space there and place the building so that it has a front onto Gay Street, but yet it's back and sitting down a little bit, which we'll see a video here in a little bit that'll kind of help explain that. What that would allow us to do then is to have an entrance, which is sort of that little black, or a little brown square that's right on the front of the building there. That would be the primary entrance into the building, and once we get into the floor plans, that'll make a little bit more sense why it's all centered like that and not, you know, centered on the building. But the idea would be, as you're coming up the, up the street towards Gay Street, that you would see that entrance from the corner there, and we start to create a, a sense of importance for the entrance of this building. We would rework the, the street, or the driveway there to create almost a boulevard. One would be on one-way traffic in on one side of that monument, the one-way traffic out on the other side of the monument, and bring you down into a... out on the other side of the monument, and bring you down into a sort of a motor court, I call it, or a parking area, where we would have some accessible ADA handicap accessible parking spaces there, which was another goal of the, of the project, is to provide that type of parking here, where we can now access all of the existing buildings from that point there with accessible walkways into all of these historic buildings, which would give a much-needed public entrance for accessibility reasons. That would, also there would be sort of a drop-off there in the, in the driveway sort of offsets, and then allows you to come down behind the hill, and then we've showing the long driveway that goes back to Warren Street there, which would have parking along it. So that would be a way to come into the property or to the, to the courthouse from that, from Warren Street, put the parking down there where it's kind of back off of Gay Street, but provides some much-needed parking into the, to the area. To the rear of the building, that parking lot now is currently not intended for public use, and it would continue to be so. That would allow us to, a place for the, all the sheriff's vehicles to come and go and to park, as well as that would give some dedicated parking for the judicial, for the judges and the judicial staff to come and get into the building without having to be out in the, the public way.
That, and just to point out, that's one of the things that's in the court guidelines and that we heard from the chief judge, is that its separation is critical. You can't have the judge, the jury, the person on trial, and everybody else coming in the building through the same door and up the same stairways. You can't do it, and they have to be separated, and, and that's done with this plan.
Yes, and also this, that, there's a Sally Port there, which is essentially a garage that they can drive a van from the.
Regional jail.
Regional jail, thank you, into that bill, into that room. They close the door before they take the prisoners out, so that there's no way that they can get out of the building and out into the public. So the whole concept is to, you know, control circulation, keep separate, keep separate parties apart that don't need to be a part of the one another, and create a safe environment for it. So I think that's a good segue to looking at the actual plans themselves. So maybe zoom out a little bit so we can kind of see the overall. So what we've got here are the two plans. The one to the right is the main level of the building, and the one to the right would be below it. So we've used the contour, the, the topography to recess the building down into the ground so that you don't have a two-story big building sticking up above these buildings here. But yet, because of the topography, there, it's, it's open on the backside, which you'll see in, in the video here. So on the first floor, if you can maybe scoot down just a bit where we can see, so that's, that's that front entrance there. You come into the building and there is, you go up a partial floor, and then you go down a partial floor. This one, you go up, and on here, everything in blue is all the court functions. So the judges were very good to say that we don't need to build multiple courtrooms, because we don't ever see the point where we'll have that kind of docket where we need to have multiple courtrooms. So there, this courtroom will serve, this U courtroom would serve the same per functions as this courtroom, which you have your circuit court, you have your general district court, and then you have your juvenile domestication court. Will all be functioning out of this single courtroom. There are a screening area there, so you would only be screened in this building, in this concept, if you were going to court. So if you need to come see the clerks or the Commonwealth attorney, you wouldn't have to go through a screening process. You would only do that if you wanted to go into the courtroom itself. So a lot of localities you go into now, a lot of these buildings, they want everybody screened that's come into the, I think that's one of the, the nuances and customizations that this committee wanted is, we're, we're still a small community. We don't feel like we have to have that level of security here. And the, the way the building is let, is, is arranged, the public is only, is limited to certain areas. They can't necessarily get, they cannot unless they are escorted in to any of the blue areas. They can't, they can't get there without going through the screening process. The courtroom itself is the main block there. It is of, of scale, it's a little larger than this room here. It's probably about the size of this room plus the rooms there. So it would be a little bit larger courtroom. It would have a jury box there. It would have the judges' bench, litigant tables. The bar for the courtroom is right about there. So the well of the courtroom would be much larger to, than, than this one, maybe third again, larger than the room we're in now. And then you would have the gallery seating back there, which would be here. We, as you are here, we have estimated this will hold around seventy-five to eighty folks in a full setting. To the left, you see the little, the bump out there in the middle, that is that Sally Port we talked about. That leads into a couple of holding cells that'll be located there. And then, once the, the folks are taken out of that van from the regional jail, they're put in these holding rooms, and they only go into the courtroom when they are in court. So the public comes in from the top. There's some additional witness waiting rooms and conference rooms there for, again, more security. And then the, if you slide down the page just a little bit more, across the, the bottom of the page here is the judges' chambers and the jury rooms with restroom facilities. And then there are hallways and corridors that allow the jury to go into the courtroom and the judge to go into the courtroom without, again, being in that, in that public way. And then right there to the left, there's kind of a little peekish box that says that would be the separate judges' entrance. So the judge could come and go in through that, as well as some of the staff could go into those, that, that door.
So that door pops out back here by the parking lot?
Right.
One thing the judges, the chief judge told us, he wanted the door directly behind his chair. If he wants out, he wants out quickly.
The rest, the rest of the space here, kind of this yellowish space off to the right would be the clerk's office, that is the general district, the combined office for the general district and J and D R clerk, which is currently located downstairs in this building. And that would be some, that would be area for them, for their files. There's a calendar there that they can interact with the, the public. And then another feature is this little corridor here, we call the fines corridor. So if you have to pay a traffic fine or a ticket when you're in that courtroom, you're asked to go through that door, and you have to make those arrangements before you can exit the.
Exit through the gift shop.
Exit through the gift shop, exactly. And get your souvenirs. So that's, that's pretty much, there also is a, there's a stair there, which acts as a internal circulation from below, so that the circuit court clerk can come up to the, to the floor. The remainder of this floor is up to the, back to the top right, and it'll kind of come full circle here. We've got a stair, exit stair there, and then as you come in right at the front door, there is the, there's an elevator that allows ADA accessibility to this floor, as well as the floor below.
And then this area is the court services, which has one office downstairs in this building?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, court service area there. If we slide over to the lower level here, and as you come down, sort of this, this, there are public restrooms, you can see the stair, the elevator comes down. And then on this floor, all the way to the bottom here is the, the Commonwealth attorney's office, which we have expanded the ability to add another attorney into that from what they have presently, plus a couple of paralegals. So they have a suite there that, again, the public can get to, but they are, they're, they're in the courthouse, but they don't necessarily have free run of the courthouse. To the left side is the circuit court clerk's office, which is all of the facilities that are in our building next door here. In there would be the deeds room at the top, then there's the records room and rooms for staff to work there. And the, the rest of that floor would be some long-term storage and some mechanical specs. So that's sort of a whirlwind tour of where we are, the building, I think, from a standpoint of flow and function and, and space, it's all been worked out. You can, we can debate the, what the exterior of it looks like, and whether it needs some more massaging or, or some improvements to it. We can certainly talk about that. And again, this is conceptual in nature. So what we'd like to do now is go to a video that we've created from the computer model that we have done. Now, obviously, this can look somewhat cartoonish, because you, it is a computer model, and it's all you, you know, it's not intended to be photorealistic, it's just to help folks get an idea of the buildings and the scale of this building compared to the, the rest of them. So this is not, wait, at the beginning, oh, okay, here we are. So what we're looking at here is sort of an aerial view of the historic courthouse there. You can see the various clerk buildings to, to the left, and then in the far, far over there is the new proposed building.
And so here's the treasurer, treasurer's office, commissioner revenue, registrar, courthouse, clerk, jail hiding over there.
So some of the things that we wanted to do here, and why the building kind of looks the way it does, is we don't want it to try, we didn't, the committee didn't feel like we wanted to try to replicate a historic building, that we wanted it to be a building that was modern, but yet it has to fit in its place, it needs to relate to the building. So what we have done with this scheme is to pick up on some of the elements of these buildings around here and do an interpretation of that. So as you can see, one of the primary features of these buildings are these gable ends that have the, I call it the, the wall that stands above the, the roof line to give you some of that, somewhat of that parapetted gable end, which you can kind of see there. This is as you would be walking down Gay Street. You see the treasurer's office there, and then our, the, the building is in the background there, which as you can see, it's, the roof line of it is pulled down to be, intentionally to be in line or close to in line with these historic buildings, even though we want a higher floor-to-floor for all the things that a modern building needs. Then as you're walking along, we, again, did not want to really affect the feeling and the atmosphere that you get along Gay Street until you get to this point here, where you can now see the entrance to the building. The, the column entrance there, if you see, would be in line with this walkway as you go down. And the idea here was to take the feel of the belfry that's on this building here and do somewhat of a larger scale of it, again, to help tie us back into the historic character of the building. So as you see here, the mass, the taller roof area you see there is the roof of the courtroom itself. We did not, we chose not to bring it forward and try and compete with the temple front that we have here on this building. And so the, this is where we have ended up at this concept level. You can see the, sort of the motor court here, there's a drop-off with this walkway here, the parking's off to our left, and then you can see this walk that kind of goes diagonally up. That would bring you up the, the slope to get you onto the main level of the courthouse, which is, a focal is this entrance, and then the other end of it is the, the monument, the Confederate monument itself here in the yard. As we move around, you can see the obvious gable ends here, and the pushing back and forth again to help break the mass of this building down. Then as we start to come around the building, then you can kind of get a feel for the overall scale of it as it is fitting in with the other buildings. And the brick seemed to be an obvious choice of material, the white material there is still some debate about what that would be, but we're looking for a low-maintenance material there. And as we come around to the, this is what you would see coming from Warren Street, or looking up from the, the pond down below. You see the parking off to the right there. We have tried to keep the number of retaining walls down to a minimum, but just to get the, the topography to work for us, we would want some. Now you're coming back around where you can see that, that garage door there is for the Sally Port. This is the parking area where the judges would park, and then the sidewalks into the entrance there.
So there's the judges' door that we talked about.
Right. The second door over here on the left is actually a secondary exit, but it would also be a place where the court security folks from the sheriff's office could come and go into the building without having to go through the, the public area. And they're just right across the sheriff's office, it's just right behind us in this, this place, this.
You want to mention the windows?
And the windows that you see there are actually clear story. They're windows that are up high in the courtroom. The courtroom would have approximately eighteen to twenty-foot ceiling, which would be very reminiscent of this court, how this courtroom was originally before this floor was put in. But it would allow us to bring natural light into those, into the main courtroom. This is also a south-facing facade, and that roof there that you see, the idea is that that's an opportunity for us to install solar, if we felt that was, you know, a good investment for us to do here, but that, those solar panels you kind of see there on the roof, they don't necessarily have to be quite soaked like that, they could be more flat in profile, but the computer only lets us do so much with it. And then as you're coming around this front piece here, this sort of central window area is actually the window into the, the waiting area of the courtroom. And you can see the, the, sort of the raised roof there, which again mimics that, the, you know, the original belfry, so. All right. All right.
Jeez, this is.
Yep.
There we go. I just wanted to point out, this, this half circle window.
Luminet window, we call it, yes.
Okay. That's architect speak, I'm an engineer.
Yeah.
It's the same thing as on the front of this building.
Right.
So I can drag this however board members or building committee members would like.
That's really sort of an overview, I don't, you know, I think I can just stop there and I'd be glad to respond to any questions or answer anything that I could.
There'd be more plantings around the building.
Right, yeah. This is obviously a very, again, the problem, the curse, the, the beautiful thing about these computers is it allows you to see these three dimensional images. The curse of it is that they're not photorealistic, so again, it's more intended to convey massing materials, but yes, there's a lot of work that would still need to be done for landscaping. As you can see, we're not at the oceanfront here either, so.
What's the estimation?
Excuse me?
What is the estimated cost?
We have not estimated the cost yet. That's something that would be the next step in the process, but we have not come up with a cost at this point in time.
The, the board at an earlier meeting discussed the relative costs of having to renovate, add to this building, plus add additional space for the administrative purposes that are shown in this building that wouldn't fit here. And, and looked at just from a relative perspective, they felt that a new building would be less than doing all that with trying to modify this building and add and do all that. So from a relative perspective, there's a thought that it, this might be more cost-effective. From an absolute value, that answer isn't known, and it will take a bond to do a project like this. And the county has one outstanding bond left from work, and the schools, it'll be paid off in two years, and they'll be completely debt-free. So the timing is, is not bad, relative to planning for a big project for the community.
Those comparative cost estimates are in line, but we can still find more dots.
Ms. Smith?
And I, I just wanted to thank Gary for mentioning that. I had meant to mention our bonds and our debt service, because I think when I joined the board, we had three bonds outstanding, and we've paid off two of them, and we still just have the one remaining, which we paid off in a few years. And we have been in a very good financial position for several years now, and in a position where we can contemplate doing things, which is a wonderful thing. We need to be very careful about what we choose to do, obviously, but it is nice to be able to be in a position to do some planning and also take care of what we've got.
But this, this is a significant project. I mean, the one, I think here, you can see the scale of it. You know, construction is not cheap, but we, I don't want to speculate on that, that number right now.
Well, and there, there is a large oak tree also, I think, that's not shown in today's modeling also, in the back of the complex.
Somewhere over here.
Yeah.
So, and there are many people that are very attached to that large oak tree as well.
I think the other thing to remember is that when this building is done, folks can move out of this building and the building next door, and then they can be repurposed, so you're not, you're not having to try to build a building around an occupied building or renovate a building wise, so it provides that additional space.
So that's the bigger projects that the building committee is working on, and that is rented space for the building zoning office, my office outside of town, and to be able to then repurpose these buildings where the clerks would be moving out and the Commonwealth Attorney would be moving out, repurpose those, owned buildings for buildings that are, where you're now renting space. And then bringing county administration back onto the campus, having everybody together. And I know that was an important point, that the board was working towards this campus concept to get everybody back together in county-owned buildings.
We pay five, over $5,000 a month in rent, if I remember correctly, for that space, one of which is basement space with no exit. And then the others were the extension offices. And, and, you know, that is the big challenge of this planning experiment is, is placing all the dominos correctly. And, you know, if you do one thing, it affects another. And I know that there's some folks that have said that they want to also see the courthouse moved out of town, and we had discussed that. I don't know if we've discussed that as a board or at the building committee, but I would just say, that's also part of, like, the game of dominos. If you move the courthouse, you have to move the sheriff's office, it's a whole, it's a whole exercise and very messy, and you have to have a referendum where folks vote to do that. And having talked to supervisors from the county where that referendum has failed, it is nice to think about working with the space that we have in the town and with the town to, to proceed and be able to maintain the campus concept.
Pass boards have saw fit to have this acreage available, and that was a whole process with the town and, as I recall, and so, four acres is there for this sort of project. So I don't know if you want to open the other public comment or have a interjectory sort of thing?
If the board is fine with moving on to the second public comment, I think that would be efficient.
I would just, I would just ask if the members of the building committee have anything additional that they wanted to say, because we are very lucky to have a lot of expertise on the building committee to enlighten our discussions.
The only thing I would ask is. The only thing I would ask is when we get in public comment with a limited amount, have it more of a give and take, so we can ans, answer direct questions if that's possible shortly, all right, rather than going on and on and on, all right?
I assume you won't have answers to everything, but we can.
Well, yeah, wherever you can.
Yeah.
And not long drawn out.
I'll tie you.
Dale, you got anything? You got anything?
One of the things that we wanted to talk about is the design, the overall concept, and why we didn't go down the road, make, trying to make it look historic. And the concept is that the elements in this building are very unique, and they're very subtle. We have very wide window jams, big thick mullions, wide broad flat columns. How do we take these elements and put them in this new building and not make it ugly? So a lot of historic buildings now, what they do is they add on to the building with something that's modern, and they take specific elements and make it look compatible. What we don't want, what we didn't want is a Hampton Inn-style historic building from Williamsburg. We're trying to avoid the Fairfax-style Federalist historic-looking building. We want something unique, we'd like to copy these elements, and this is just a concept, so we've had a lot of discussion about that.
Would you do me a favor for the people in the audience and listening in, give them your background, just so they know why you're speaking?
I'm a historic preservationist, and I've been in the historic preservation business for 40 years. And I'm always the one jumping and screaming when they want to change anything or even get the idea that they're going to change something that's historic. But we can't match this brick, it's historic brick. We can't match the mortar joints, they're raised ribbon. We can't match the window jams. You can't go to Home Depot and buy these components and put them into a new building and make it look historic. It will just look fake. So rather than fake historic, we're trying to get complementary, and that's why we're at this point now. So it may be a disagreement, we can disagree, and there'll probably be more concepts, but that's the standard. If you look for the Department of Interior Standards for Historic Preservation, they state if you're going to try to add something to a historic building, match the time period. Don't try to make it look old because you can't. It'll just look fake. That's the concept.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale.
Thank you, Dale.
Ms. Smith, you ready to go to?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I didn't speak first.
Sure. Do you want to come up to the mic and speak for us? Yes, speak with us?
Yes.
I am opening the second public comment for the evening and expect that most of this will be about the bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Arthur L. Goff, I'm the Commonwealth Attorney, I'm from Hampton District. I don't normally break my silence, you know, unless I'm asked a question by the board. But I really want to commend the building committee with this design. It's, in my opinion, and it is just an opinion, it really is the best of all possible worlds. I agree completely with, with the building committee that, that to try to build something that looks old is going to look fake. But at the same time, to capture the essential architectural elements of the courthouse and the compound is vital. The, the idea of using the slope lot to allow for a continuum of the line of sight of the roof line is absolutely brilliant. The, the, the use of the gable ends to break up the blockiness of a very large, what ordinarily would be a data center-sized building, is absolutely brilliant. I've got a few quibbles about, you know, hey, you didn't give me a parking spot and you didn't give me my own door to come in, but, you know, I'm sure we can talk about that, you know, that's something that, where to go, yeah. We can get that all worked out. But I'm here to say to the board that this is a historic time for this board. We have to look to the future. I see, I've got Mr. Luke here, and he spent 30 years coming in and out of this building, and we both know what it's like to try to litigate in this space, and it's awful, because you got a murder trial, here comes the murderer on bond, walking up the stairs, here comes his entourage, here are all the witnesses for the Commonwealth, and then there are all the witnesses for the defense, and they're intermingling with the jury. And it's, yeah, and it's just a, just a wonder in, in our 200-year history that something bad hasn't resulted as, from that. So I, I really do commend the study that was done and the, the paying attention to the practical, because we got to look 200 years in the future. This building's going to have to last us and serve us as a community for as long as this one did, since the 1830s. So when we get to questions of how much is it going to cost, it's going to cost a lot. I'll, I'll buy everybody here lunch if it's going to be a penny less than eight million bucks. I don't care what all the estimates are, add 20%. So, but we have to do it right the first time, and this is a historical moment in our county. This is a building that we need. No one wants to tear down the history here, everybody reveres it, including myself. It's a very historic and a lovely old structure, but we can't go on. The wiring in this building is in bad shape, there was almost a fire. And imagine if we had a fire and we got us all up here. It's going to be a tragedy. So we need to move on. Time is now to actually project ourselves into the future and give the future generations the same legacy that those folks in the 1830s gave to us. And I think that what the building committee and our board has done is absolutely brilliant, given the, what we've got to work with, with the slope of the lot, the access, the size, and making it look like it belonged here. Or as an old carpenter friend of mine used to say, Mr. Sam Moore, and I know you all know, knew Jim, he'd say, well, Art, you cut that so good, it looked like it grew here. And that's what this looks like. It looks like it's an organic park of Little Washington. So I ask you to support the board and please provide constructive comments. And keep an open mind, I think it's a brilliant design, and I thank you all, and thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Arthur.
All right, so anyone wishing to speak, I'll recognize you, if you'll come up, give us your name and the district you're in, and I'm going to do my best to keep this to five minutes per person, but if there is a give and take with the building committee, I'll understand that. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Caroline Ente from the Hampton District. I also chair the Town of Washington Planning Commission. I just wanted to be absolutely clear that I understood what you said about the design and the size. So this is one building that will be five times the size of this building that we're in. I'm interested by that because I think, I see that you've tried to make it look like it's separate buildings, that it doesn't quite work for me. It still is going to be huge. And when we, on the Planning Commission, just debated Rush River Commons, one, which is also in the Town of Washington, the biggest concern of the public who came to see the initial plans was the size of the frontage, the size of the building compared to other buildings in Little Washington. Did you ever think about doing something to break it up a little bit more, not having one physical building?
I can answer that.
Ms. Fraser?
Okay.
No, I say, I can answer that, no, no, we didn't, because we were trying to keep it all together for security reasons. And what we have now is separate buildings, and, and it's not, it's not a good idea. It's not what the judge was, was encouraging us to do.
Thank you, Mr. Redd.
And just add to that, the, the blue area that we were looking at there, that would make the courtroom function as it needs to from a security standpoint, that's around 9,000 square feet, so we would be, you still would have a building that's twice, at least twice the size of this building there, just to have those functions associated. Now, we could argue, well, we could put the clerks in a separate building, and I think that just creates more building, which creates more separation, which sprawls things around the courthouse. I do appreciate the comment that, you know, it is a big building, that we want to, and we try to articulate it as best we can, but that's where we're at right now.
Thank you.
Another option that could happen, Chair.
Yes, sir.
We, we did talk about pushing it further into the ground, but that has its own problems.
And the size, a lot of it came from the, the study that was done to see what people, what our officers needed.
And there are possibilities for combining some small spaces, you know, but we as a building committee felt we were at a point where, in the design process, where we wanted to have feedback on what we had done before we moved forward.
I think Mr. Vaughn would probably tell me I'm right, that the, the first thing people say after they move into a new building is they don't have enough space, and they ran out of space. And so if you're building a 100-year, 200-year structure, we need to be thinking about that. We don't want it as absolutely as small as possible for today, because it might not quite do what we think we need for tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
Al Zushai, Jackson District, I, I thank you for the hard work that the committee has done, you've done a great job, but it's crap. First of all, who has mandated that we need this large space? Judge suggests it, right? Where is it written that we need it? I understand it's the Commonwealth Attorney's dream space, and he wants it, he's for it, I get that, and I would be the same thing. I'd be, like all of you, I'd want the mission creep, I'd want the offices, I'd want my secretary here, I want this, I want that. We've got to afford it at the end of the day. It doesn't fit into the 18th century template of this, of this town, it's ugly. I beg to differ with you that you can make historic-looking buildings modern, and they don't look crappy, I've seen examples all in this town itself, but it doesn't have to be historic, it has to be nice, it has to fit in with this community, it has to serve this community. This community is 7,000 people, it is not going to be 100,000 people in 20 years' time or 100 years' time or whatever. We are a stable population, we're going to stay stable, we don't need all of this. We can scale it appropriately, we're going to stay the same size. This is, this is mission creep. I don't like it, okay? That's my opinion, but everybody I've talked to says it's ugly. It's a big barn in the middle of our town, our cute charming little town. And I get it, everyone wants the space, and, oh my God, the horror that, you know, a defendant and a plaintiff have to come in the same staircase. I mean, they can come five minutes apart, we have security, we can do things like that, we don't need the space, we survived in this space for so long. I'm not saying we have to stay cramped in here forever and ever, but there's a wish list, okay, whatever it wants, I get that, that's basically what you've created. But in my mind, that's not going to fly, that's not what this community wants to spend its money on, and that's not what this community needs 100 years from now. needs 100 years from now to look at that eyesore. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mike Millen again from Hampton. I can, I like the effort that the Committee put forth. It's answered all my questions. I really liked viewing the plan view. Okay, I have a few, but I think, I think the elevations are distracting for this issue because there's two parts to this. The plot, the plot, the plot plan, and that's what the effort to be in. And then, and then the elevations are need, need to have more community input, maybe, maybe a design competition or something like that. But, but I can, but the Committee can be the judges. But, but I think, I agree, I mean, I'm just to say that my, that my, a lot of my, my questions have been answered tonight by this, by the, by the clear presentation of the, of the plan view, and I just would like to tell it to the Board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
My name is Michael Shamelitz. I'm from the Hampton District. I'm both a lawyer, and I've only owned property here for about 20 years, so I think most of the people here would call me a come here. Having said that, I really do appreciate popping the balloon at the beginning of this because I thought this was a horrible design, and I thought this building was going to disappear. And I'm from Alexandria, where history is respected, and I think that we ought to do more with respect to the design to create that historical comparison to the, what we have here. As a lawyer, I would indicate that I appreciate what counsel has said about access, but I'm wondering if you're going to spend $8 million, why don't you spend $10 million, especially if it's going to be a bond issue, and bring the Sheriff's Office over here? Because that's really the security that you need for a courthouse. And right now, what you have is the Sheriff's Office 200 yards away. And if you incorporate the sheriff's needs within the courthouse community or the courthouse campus, you're solving all the problems for the future, not just that of the, of the current courthouse. The other thing that I would say, and I apologize because it appears that you all did a really good job, but that, I think it's called a cochon, or the portico with the columns, looks as though somebody took it out of their back pocket and stuck it on there. And I just, I hated it when I first saw it. So I would like more work done, and I'm more than happy to assist in any way that I can. And thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Ron Macklin from Jackson District.
I'd like to deal with another aspect of the building. First, I'd like to say about this building. This building is like most of the people in here. It's had its career, and it's time to retire. It's, you know, it needs to be, not, it doesn't need to go away, it just needs to be repurposed. As far as the new building, I'm with everybody else. The conceptual drawing, and it is a conceptual drawing, it's not great. But my big concern is about the location. The location right out here, it's on the hillside. It's basically the drainage area for the buildings that exist right now. And we're, we're looking at putting 10,000 square feet parking lots, which I assume are going to be paved and everything, and that's going to create a lot of drainage problems that we're going to have to deal with. We had a post office, teeny-tiny little building, piece of cake, going to go in, six months, going to be ready to go. But drainage came into the issue, and it took a year to get that straightened out. So I think, and I think we would face the same situation here, is that, yes, you want to put the building here, but where's the water going to go? Because we don't, I mean, it's going to require, it could require retention ponds. You've got the Avon Pond, but that's not on county property. Where's the water going to go? And I think we need to deal with that issue before we go too much farther in trying to figure out a design for what may not ever work down here. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Ron, we did address that. There, the engineers at the company looked at it. Right now, the current plan is, are the large underground tanks underneath that driveway going out to Warren Avenue. We did look at a runoff pond, whatever, but that's the current, so yes, we did look at the runoff issue.
Is that part of building cost?
Again, we're estimating costs based on square footage. We're not, we're close to being able to do a real cost estimate, okay?
Thanks. Thanks, Paige. If you're going to speak, sir, I need you to come up. Yes, thank you.
My name's Henry Gofflein. I live in the town here. Before that, I lived out on Paris Hollow for a good many years. I have a fondness for this building. 47 years ago, when I moved here, I came here to register the vote. It was the first door on the right as you came into this building. That's where the registrar was located. I'm a little, this is supposed to be a meeting where there's supposed to be information given to the people who are here, yet when you ask things like, what is it going to cost, I'm told, go look at board docs. I, when I come here, that you can tell me what your estimate is, square foot. If anybody here thinks that you're going to build a 40,000-square-foot building for $8 million, you've got a guest coming.
It's not 40,000 square feet.
Twenty, even 20,000 square feet. It's two levels, so you've got square footage on both, right?
It's 3,000.
All right. Even, even 20,000 square feet. And the design reminds me of an old joke, you know, where two guys go out in a rowboat, and one guy says to the other, what will you do if a storm comes up? And he says, throw out an anchor. And he says, well, when do you do another storm come out, come up? Throw out an anchor. And that goes on and on. Finally, one guy says, where are you getting all these anchors from? And the other one says, well, where are you getting all these storms from? And what I'm saying is that this building is, seems to be, you want it to accommodate everything in this county. So all of a sudden, we need three separate entrances, so we have three bumpouts. You don't need three bumpouts on a building. You can separate it inside the building. I mean, you know, when I talk about material, all I hear is Hardy plank when I, when I hear about, we need a material that is, that is, that is low-cost, you know, that, that's easily to maintain and whatnot. And as far as buildings, the jail, now, I'm not talking about the part that Conde added and all that, but that building was added to. Those two chimneys that you see there are not the original design. They're buried in the building, you know, and they were able to, to have a design that was compatible, which they could add to the building. So when somebody says to me, you can't add to a building and have it look right, I don't, I don't buy that. And as far as materials goes, there's so many materials that you can get that would be in keeping with, with this building, but to have, somehow having a building that's half-white, half-brick, it's just going to destroy this campus. This is a beautiful campus, and, and what's, what they're calling for is going to design it, to just destroy it. And also, they talk about solar panels. Well, I believe in solar panels, but they don't have to be on the roof. I mean, you know, they can be somewhere where you can't see them. The prime example of that is, is one of the vineyards. You don't even know that they have solar panels unless you look for them. So why in this town do you decide, well, we're just going to put solar panels up on top of the roof, you know, where it's supposed to be a historic building? But I just think it's so overdesigned. You know, originally, they talked about taking the jail and using it, renovating it, and using it for office space. If you build this new building with everything, you talk about doing something with it. Well, what are you going to do with this building? Everybody's already in the other building. I mean, you know, you, everybody who, who wants to be there, or you created space for us in the other building, and I can't figure out what you're going to do with the jail and what you're going to do with this building if the spaces that you've created seems to encompass the, you know, the, all your needs. So I really would like, for my own benefit, really somebody to do real, serious, how this building could be added to. I think, personally, think it can be added to, rather than, than talking about 8 million or 12 million or whatnot, which, something which, I hate to say, to me would be an eyesore. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Gofflein. I know Mr. Whitson was very vocal that we do that research early on, and I believe the May Board Supervisors Meeting is where we address that question, and there should be lengthy documents attached to that agenda on board docs detailing why that decision was made.
I was a builder in the law.
Nobody can hear you if you're back there.
I was a builder, and some builders here, and we always get a budget before we start. And all of a sudden, here you need to sell your building without a budget. Well, that's what it looks like. You know, we're going to do this, and this, and this, and then we're going to figure out what it's going to cost. And it seems to me that if you were, they're good students, they, they didn't have a setup plan, says what we can spend, let's see what we can do, and now let's just do this enormous building.
Thank you. Anybody else in the courtroom? Yes, sir.
Well, John Beardsley from the Wakefield District. I might begin with a question. I would, I would agree that a lot of serious thought has gone into this, and I recognize that it's a complicated agenda, and not everyone's going to be happy. But I do think, I do think this project has a way to go.
Oh, yeah. Doubt.
Okay, great. So, and I might start with a question, which is whether Wiley Wilson concurs that it's impractical to locate a building or a collection of buildings behind this existing courthouse. I understand there's some infrastructure issues, but could you speak to the possibility of, my, my fundamental question here has to do with a site plan. I think that there needs to be more of a visual and physical connection with the existing courthouse, out of respect for the building and out of respect for the campus-like character of this space. I think that developing a campus-like arrangement of smaller structures would be a much more effective solution and much more respectful solution. So I want to get at, what are the problems of locating a building or a series of buildings behind here?
Well, that, that, that study was done, and it would take a building, this expansion would have to go at least as deep as the building is currently, so you'd be doubling the size of the building.
For just the functions it is.
For just the function in the court. That would not include any of the clerk's offices, and would not, so that was just this building. That was presented to the board, and as we said, and it didn't get to this level of detail or conceptual. Please understand, these are not hard-bid documents that we can take out to a contractor tomorrow. This is more conceptual, so that's why we're linking it to the public at this point in time to get feedback. Obviously, there are some very strong thoughts on it. I think the design works. Can we change the materials up? Can we change some of the finishes up? Yes. But I believe that the massing of it, obviously, I wouldn't have put it out there if I didn't feel like it was true to what the board was telling me. Can we improve it? Sure. So back to your question, as far as how we would extend this building back, it could physically be done. We could, I think in that concept, we had looked at reversing the courtroom, putting all this back there, and then having all those secure spaces, jury keepers, judges, all of that, that behind us, and making the building work.
Well, one of the biggest issues is the operational aspect of performing a project like that. So this courthouse can't stay and can't function with that level of work to expand and, and provide the separated access, which, when we talk to the judges, if, if he told us his top three reasons that something had to happen, it was security, 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 period. And he does have the power to drop an order on the county, and then we'll be scrambled. So this, this process is critical to get ahead of that. Because this, this may seem quaint and lovely, this is far from standard of care. And we might like the quaint nature of it, but it's not acceptable to the judges. So we must do something. So additional buildings in the back could potentially work, but we continue to have ADA issues. We don't like the fact that public has to access this back parking lot to have ADA access to these buildings. It's hard to inform them that they have to go there to get ADA access, and now you're loading additional buildings to the rear where the, the focus of the, of the buildings is Gay Street. So now we've got to get people to understand somehow that they need to be out on Gay Street and back there, and separate everybody at multiple elevation levels, I think would be complicated. But we could put people on the move, so absolutely it can be done.
Yeah, I might follow up a little bit then. The building still strikes me as having just way too much mass, and I respect that you've tried to be contextual in terms of materials, in terms of the gable ends, in terms of the, the, well, the, some of the details of the building, but it still strikes me as, as, as way too massive. And the sort of Jeffersonian idiom of this building brings to mind the sort of design of the lawn at the University of Virginia, that sort of academical village that, that everybody celebrates. And I don't know if it's possible to break the building down further and create more of a village-like look to it that would still answer your security concerns. In the best of all worlds, I think that might be the way to push this. Something that has more of a, of a village idiom, that maybe uses porticos and walkways as secure spaces to get people from one place to another. I recognize that, that ADA issues, but it, it does seem to me that, that there might be another, another way to go here. And finally, the, the Gay Street facade strikes me as, as quite problematic. The portico, it just doesn't look like a dignified, significant building yet. And so the, the sort of bumpout portico, the, the windows, I don't know, there's just something about that facade that doesn't say this is the most significant building in the county. And, and it needs to say that. So I think there's a way to go here that is more respectful of the village setting, that... that would resolve some of these questions about massing, and that at the same time would affirm the importance of the building. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Let me address a couple of issues. One, you have to look at the whole picture of space requirements, all right? First of all, realize that the court is not going to allow meetings like this to happen in their courtroom anymore, all right? So this building is probably, most likely, going to become the Board of Supervisors community meeting place, all right, however that is. We've got lots of rented space. If you add up all those other space requirements, the registrar is way short of space. So you need a whole lot of space. You started trickling those. We actually had one concept. It was one supermassive building that put all the admin back there, but it was like the Great Wall of China going across from Avon Hall. So there would be a lot. I just, what I'm trying to say is, look at that first report that was done in January, I believe, that had the space requirements in it, all right? And you look at those numbers, you'll see how much space is required, how deficient we are. The issue with the judges, Gary kind of said, they can shut it down. I think there are exactly requirements put out by them. So it's not just a whim. Those are hard requirements. So please look at those things and see how much space is really required. If we're going to get out of renting space and things like that, get the campus back in here, it's a big number. It is a really big number. And building that building, it looks like the rest of the buildings that we own will house what we need, all right? So we can get out. I mean, it's going to be a domino, it's going to take a while, but that's the kind of, look at those, the space numbers, they are large.
In the May documents?
No, it was the...
I think it was January.
Yeah, it was in January. The January presentation had the spreadsheet of the space requirements.
Yes, sir.
Well, it's obvious that a lot of, Rick Kohler, Jackson District, it's obvious that a lot of work has gone into this. It's daunting, to say the least. At the risk of being stoned and falling from a tree, I wondered, the old jail and the clerk's office, the clerk's going to move out of there anyway. It seems to me that that's a large space over there. What we're losing here is the facade and the community of the buildings. We have this line of buildings right now. It seems like if we could come up and then come this way with it off the end over here, come forward and have an entry over there, you would have this whole complex would remain as one complex. You'd have to eliminate the jail, probably the clerk's office, and then you could come back and even potentially wrap back around the back. You have your parking, a lot of things would potentially expand back here. And you don't lose that community sense of the courthouse and the wall being one complex. Has that been looked at at all?
That is not one of the site plan concepts to put a building up here in this front corner, I think is what you're saying.
Well, the other corner, well, it's some room, but in the corner, maybe just wrapping a bit and then coming back and...
Would you put the court actually in there?
I'm brand-new to this. I'm not, I don't know where I'd put the court. Well, the court would probably go into that building, yes.
I don't think that lot is large enough to accommodate the courthouse.
It's pretty big.
I think it's chiseled.
I think he's talking about tearing down the old jail.
Yeah, tearing down the jail.
That's an 1800s...
The jail was an old house, I think, wasn't it? But the jail, you can't even use the jail now, it's so much concrete and steel and...
It's an 1800s building, which we're back to.
The oldest jail in these cities.
Eighteen thirty.
You can't tear down this little...
You can't tear down the old jail? I think, wasn't it a house before that?
No.
The jail was renovated.
I don't know. I mean, as I said, I may get thrown under the bus here, but I'm just trying to look at other options to be, you know, you have to think out of the box. Sometimes you have to think bigger, you have to think smaller to make things work. There's a lot of ways to make things work that aren't, you know, you don't see at first. And I just don't know if that's a possibility, but it just seems to me there's a fairly significant space there that would bring all these facades together, come around, and then it could work its way back, and you'd have multiple entrances. You'd have a lot of ways to work it. That's just my thought.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Steph Ritter, and I'm from the Wakefield District, and I want to thank the Building Committee for the amount of time and effort that they put into this. In my honest opinion of the design is that it looks like a juvenile detention center. And I realize that some of that probably has to do with security requirements, but it's just way, it just, it looks foreboding, and it looks a lot like a jail to me. It doesn't look like somewhere where you would find, as I say, enlightened justice. And maybe we could think a little bit about that. But the other thing, my main point was going to be that we're about to spend a whole lot of money. There are, you know, many architects in Virginia who are familiar with vernacular. We really need to open this process up and get other ideas about how to make this work. You know, if we have to close down this courthouse for a short time, people can go to Fauquier County to use their circuit court during the time that this is out of commission. I mean, that just doesn't seem to me like the worst thing in the world, if it's decided that maybe the best thing would be to add to this building in some way. But I just think we're restricting ourselves in ways that are not, that we don't have to, and that this is a big deal. You know, this is going to change this county, and certainly this town. And if we don't have more than one design to look at, are we just being foolish? That's my thought, anyway.
We don't clap in the courtroom, please. Mr. Luke?
Once again, obviously, a lot of work's gone into this, and I hate to, I'm not understanding, nitpick a lot of that, but there's obviously going to be some changes made, there's some comments we've heard. The one thing I started thinking as we were sitting over there though is, what are you getting?
Give your name.
Peter Lupe, Piedmont. What are you getting for your eight million dollars, your nine billion, million dollars? Really, when you look at it, you're only getting one courtroom, because you've already got a clerk's office, you've already got a common attorney's office. So you're paying all this money to get one courtroom, is what it boils down to. And if you put that slide up there, what I noticed was, the courtroom, it seemed like there's a lot of vacant space, empty space in that courtroom. As Art said, he and I have tried hundreds of cases in this courtroom, right here, right here. We didn't need a football field to try the cases. And the point I'm getting at is, you should be looking at putting a second courtroom. We have had problems in the past. The circuit court is a big dog. When they want to use this courtroom, everybody else is out. Now, if you've got a juvenile case, a transfer hearing, emergency removal order, too bad. Circuit court's going to sit here. So what do you do? Well, you get in your little car, you drive the fuck here, and sometimes you'll get, see a judge there, if you're lucky. I disagree, I think Alan said, well, we're only 7,000 people. That may be true. Other people said, yeah, this building's going to last 100 or 200 years. You're not going to be 7,000 people on your street. I mean, look around. When your population goes up, your crime rate will go up. So this is the way it is. And so I think you're foolhardy not to plan for that extra courtroom. Right now, if you don't need it, use it as a conference room, something like that, but you've got it when you need it, and you are going to need it. You're going to need it. It does not have to be, because we're talking about a juvenile court or district court, you don't have jury trials there, so you don't need a jury box, especially in juvenile court. No spectators, it's a closed court, so you don't need near that much space, maybe a third of that. And it just seems like in a building of, what's it, 20,000 square feet, you ought to be able to find enough space for another courtroom, and I'll guarantee you, I may not be alive to see it, but sooner or later, you're going to need that. And you might as well do it now, and you'll save money in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
So my name is Brenda Van Ness, and I'm from the Piedmont, and thank you, Peter. That was some really valuable information, and I also agreed, I think it looked just like a penitentiary when I saw the picture in the paper. It frightened me, it just kind of impaled me, it hurt to see that. I am wondering what our adjacent counties, our adjacent historic counties are doing. And when we are talking about state guidelines, are we saying state guidelines to every county? It's the same, or is it based on our population? So that, I am wondering, when you're talking about the judges said, or, you know, state mandates or state guidelines, is that just for Rappahannock at X amount of a population or what? Somehow, I do have to address, not all of us are retiring, and some of us are just beginning again, and that goes to you, Ron. But Ron has been an ever-ready battery out here, and we have, are grateful to have him. Years ago, when the bank was leaving our little town, this is what this meeting is reminding me of. I've been here for 30 years. The architect at the time said, oh, no, we will have a building that reflects the pastoral setting that Rappahannock is. And when that building went out on 211, over 20 other buildings got dropped across the state, maybe 25 or 29, I can't remember correctly, all the same. There was nothing unique about it for our county. So I'm asking, with our architectural firm, have you designed for other counties like ours? Are there any buildings that look like this that currently exist that we could see? And are there others that are, that you're being called upon, you know, to draw up for? I do agree that we should have another architect, or two, or three. Having been married to one, I also know that the architectural elements are out there. A lot of real estate is being demolished. In Front Royal alone, there was a woman who opened up a store called Architectural Elements, and she practically rebuilt Poplar Forest, which was Jefferson's vacation home, with the materials that she gathered, and that has been in the last 20 years, and that is somewhere out here in the Shenandoah. The materials are here to make something look historic. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brenda.
Mr. Fraser's got his hand up, so I'd like to let him speak.
I just think, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if we answered some of the questions or comments that have been made, if it's okay, if I could address a couple of them?
Yes, sir.
We had talked, and Mr. Ron had shown us how we could use some of those meeting rooms for, like, emergency hearings of different types. So they had decided, the architect and the judges input, that they really didn't need a second courtroom, that could certainly be looked at. But we're freeing up space. When we build a new courthouse, we're freeing up space to move the clerk's office and common attorney's office, and that gives us space to move the Commissioner of Revenue and Treasury route out as we rehab those buildings, because they are taking on the water. And those buildings are not going to survive much longer if we don't deal with them. And we can't deal with those buildings while we're trying to service the community at the same time. So we have looked at a lot of these things. You could tear down the jail and move the sheriff somewhere, but where are you going to move that while we tear the jail down? There's going to be someplace to move these offices while we do other rehab work. So we've really thought this out. Of course, there could be a few things that we missed, but we've tried to address everything possible.
Thank you.
I'm not trying to downplay anything that anybody has said, but we have worked on those things, and we have brought those things forward at other public meetings. And if it hadn't been for, I don't know what happened with the newspaper article, but somehow, somebody, somewhere, got some kind of misconception that we were going to tear down the existing courthouse, and you might find people that have just as much commitment to preserving those buildings as those on the committee currently, but you can't find anybody with more commitment to preserve the buildings that we have on the, you know, of the makeup of the building committee right now. And as far as I can tell, we haven't had anybody working on the building committee over the last two years that has even thought of tearing it down. But that might be the cheapest thing to do, just build a new building, tear down the old one, and put a bronze backup somewhere, and everybody gets to make fun of it, including some of the people that spoke tonight. But nobody has ever actually come up with any kind of idea or plan to put something like that into motion. You know, if everybody wants a huge building, we can do it with stuff in the ground, but I said, that brings its own problems. You're going to have moisture issues, we don't have accounting staff to deal with that. There's quite a bit that we've looked at. I really appreciate people coming out tonight. It's just, it's just very unfortunate that there was some misinformation out there in the neighborhood for the last two weeks. I don't know, no one has told me about it. I don't understand that. It could maybe nip somewhere under the rug. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I think, Randy, you had some thoughts, too?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to the last lady's comments about, or questions about the sizes of the courtrooms, and the State Supreme Court publishes a guideline for, it's called the Virginia Courthouse Guidelines, which lays out a lot of these strategies on the security and so forth. The way they address the scale of the courthouse to the population is whether you have a small, medium, or large courtroom. And that's kind of the standard. What we're showing here, I believe, is around a medium scale of a courtroom. And can that be made a few feet shorter and save a few square feet? Yes, that could be, could be done, but that's where the guidelines come from, and a lot of the space standards are by that courtroom. Every courthouse RFP that I reply to has that referenced as a standard, we've used it. As far as other locations that we've done this, I've done probably 10 or 12 court, similar courthouses in similar-sized community. Probably, there's one over in Lancaster County that was constructed five or six years ago, maybe longer, that is of comparable scale to this. It does have two courtrooms. It is a little bit more traditional in its detailing. So that would be one place that I would reference you to go. But we've also done courthouses in Richmond County, the closest one here is probably Nelson County. So there's a lot of, and all of these communities face the same issue of, how do we put something of this size in the scale of the context of these historic courthouse screens everyone's passionate about? I appreciate your passion about that, I don't take it lightly. You know, I don't get offended when you say it looks like a juvenile detention home or whatever. or whatever, that's okay. You know, I'm here to take the feedback and try and find something that is a happy medium ground for you to do. Certainly, other architects would come with other ideas. The idea of spreading it around and making it more of a village concept, that's certainly a viable thing. It's a very difficult thing to do on this site. The topography on this site is another challenge, and there's really limited area to build once you start going down a hill here. You can all imagine that that just runs the cost up even more to try and terrace things down the hill. But again, as Gary said, you know, we go to the moon, so we can, anything is possible.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yes.
Also talk about, you showed the building committee lots of different pictures of all these other locations have done it.
Right.
So we've been through a lot of those other.
Right, I mean, I think if you wanna see another example, which we did not do, go down to Madison and look at their courthouse and how they expanded on the back. Now, their courthouse is of a similar scale, it's a similar vintage to this one. It's a little bit more ornate than this one. But, and it had flanking buildings on either side, so they went to the back and built there. And they had the topography to go down and recess it there. Buckingham County is another. I mean, that is the seminal Jeffersonian courthouse in Buckingham County. It was a reproduction, but it was Jefferson's original design. That's been added on to. Even Charlotte County, which is the only remaining Jeffersonian courthouse that Jefferson had a hand in, has had an addition put on. And they have quite a large building there that they built as well. So again, there are many ways to do it, so. Anything else I can ask?
Really, I think people need to understand that we've done other designs. We've looked at every courthouse in the state. We've looked at, I looked extensively at photographs of other county courthouses and how they did it. We looked at spring, I don't want to put it all underground. That's what I thought was best. I don't want anything. That's what I want. I like a village. I get that. We've been there. But if it's gonna have to happen, then we're trying to do it as economically as possible. You know, we've restored buildings like the Naval Academy, the Castillo of San Marcos in San Auguste. The Cadet Chapel in Westwood, up in Dallas. This is, this man has put up more changes than you can imagine. We have run into the middle, I don't, obviously, my kid would help him back out. So he's done an excellent job. Let's keep the man changed. He's really worked hard.
Anybody else that has, yes, sir. Tommy.
Tommy Atkins, Jackson District. I don't have a problem with the interior design of this building. It's desperately needed, no question about it. Somebody said, made a compliment, shared that they, well, if they close this courthouse down, they can go to Falkir. No, they cannot. I've already read in the papers that Falkir has already said, if this courthouse in Rappahannock gets shut down, they cannot come to Falkir because they are overloaded as well. So that's out of the question. But I don't think we need to digress and go backwards. Again, I think the interior of this is fine. I know you can make some changes, but the outside of it needs to be more Jeffersonian style, and it's not, this outside design is nothing like that Rappahannock is in, needs to be in Rappahannock County. This design that you've given us, I know you've put a lot of work into it, but it looks more like when I go to something up in Prince William, Fairfax, or Loudoun County. We don't want their styles brought into Rappahannock County. We are Rappahannock County, and we deserve better than that. Again, I know you've put a lot of work into it, but I think that you can do a much better job with the exterior. I don't like to see these ridges, all these peaks and valleys. That's expensive. And I want to see something more Jeffersonian style. And we talk about the lawn in Virginia, at Charlottesville. They don't, that's more like what needs to be here in how Rappahannock County. But as far as your interior, I think you're on it with a few changes. But the outside is way off. And that's just my opinion.
Thanks, Tommy.
Thank you, Tommy.
I have to say, I just wanna interject that, to me, the outside of the building is largely up for discussion. But we really need to make sure, and Mike hit on this at the beginning of the meeting, is we need to make sure we have a functional interior design that accomplishes the things that we will be needing currently and in the future. And we dialed into it in quite some detail. And I just really appreciate all the feedback. One thing I would like to get feedback on that we haven't heard feedback on tonight, and maybe that's a good thing, but I personally love the boulevard concept from Gay Street of having, you know, the street on each side of the monument and having that sort of sense of place when you pull down to the courthouse, that you are in a very important place in the county and having it, you know, plantings and landscaped. So it really sends a signal to folks that this is a valuable place for our county, and it's very loved, and we treat it special. And I really love that approach, and there hasn't been any comments, and I would be curious to know what folks think. So, thank you.
I'm Bonnie Ellis, Lakeview District. And I feel like I'm repeating, which I will repeat. Actually, I'm really glad I came tonight because this has broadened my perspective on what is going on. And actually, what I wanna do now is I wanna go outside during the day. I wanna start over here in the street, and I wanna walk around and get a better idea of how that might be situated, what it will look like, and get more of a feeling for it, which I don't have right now. And I was one of those people that thought that the courthouse was going to be removed, and this was gonna replace it. So now I have more perspective, which is great. Thank you. And my biggest complaint when I saw the picture was, like everybody else, the facade. You used the word "traditional" on a courthouse, you said you did, I think in Lancaster or someplace like that. I would like to see what that looks like. I don't know what the height is of the portico, or the entrance on the new building is in relationship to the height here. It looks quite massive. Is it seriously taller than it's not? Okay. But it's not attractive. And there seems to be, my husband is a general contractor, residential, and so I get to look at lots of buildings. And there seems to be a tendency in architecture right now to move into what is considered more contemporary, modern structures with large, flat surfaces and hard edges. And, you know, they, I don't like it, you know? And I get that same feeling on this building. It's not welcoming. It doesn't have a feeling that it fits in to, I mean, this area has a really nice feeling to it. You look at it, it's, sure, it's well-worn, it's well-used, everybody knows it, everybody likes it, but it's inviting. And I don't get that feeling from your building. It needs something to make it inviting. And if it was more inviting, maybe I would have a different feeling about the inside of it. So I don't know, I can't really say. This is something I have to think about now. But that, it would be my comment for tonight, is the outside of it definitely needs to be inviting. I use the word inviting, which it's not right now at all. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me see if somebody who hasn't spoken wants to speak. Sheila.
Sheila Gresham, New Hampshire District. I think we've had some really good input this evening. You're gonna get a lot of passion because that's who we are, is we're very, we love this place. I like Christine's idea of a sense of arrival, a welcoming thing, and that's very important. And that whole entrance, the way they have done it, would look better with a more imposing structure entryway. Now, what the architecture said, or I think what they said was, they wanted to keep it low-key and not overwhelming, which is why you've built it, the front of it on a par with what's in front of it. So you don't want this huge monstrosity in the back, which the topography has allowed you to do. You've actually been able to have a first level, and then you've had the lower, it's not a lower level, it's actually down the hill, sorta, kinda. So that kinda stuff is very appropriate. From the sound of what you needed, you went through all the requirements. Maybe the courtroom could be a little bit smaller, or perhaps, that's what you do when you're tweaking in design. You go through the interior, perhaps what Mr. Luke said, maybe there could be a second courtroom at one time. If this courtroom that's now currently on the block is big, perhaps you can take away a little bit from some of the periphery office spaces and put like a conference room that could be a second courtroom at a later time. I'm just throwing some ideas out. And then the main thing here this evening was, people don't like the exterior. Okay, that's something easy to fix, in my opinion. I worked with builders for a while, and so an exterior, it has to be complementary to what our environment is, and I think that would be, I think that's it. It may not be an easy fix, it may be a little bit complicated, but I think it would be certainly worthwhile. The other thing, I really appreciate the way you did the video, because that, you actually then helped us with the perspective of when you see the courthouse, because just looking at the pictures, it was like, holy Christopher Columbus, what in the hell is going on? Okay, sorry. So, when you did that video, though, it put the whole thing, you saw the courthouse, you saw that it wasn't overpowering, it's all in the back. So you're not driving down Gay Street to see some monstrosity. The monstrosity is cleverly designed in the back, but you have a really nice entrance way, you can do a much better exterior. And then you have the parking, and then you have the rest of the building. That's, it is not gonna be overpowering, in my opinion. I think it's well-done, it's just ugly on the front, and that's not a problem to fix. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chris Perry, Stonewall Hawthorne. So it doesn't appear to me that you all have much choice but to build a new building. And it's a shame that, I don't think it should necessarily have to be a single-purpose building, the idea of a second courtroom that could also be used for county meetings, supervisors, planning commission, whatever, because it does happen now and then that this room is too small, and it's a conflict to coordinate with the school or wherever else to have a building, a meeting. So I think it's a good idea to have that. I like the way that it's kinda tucked away from the street. You still have this whole, you know, courthouse row when you come down the street, and it's not gonna be that visible back there. But the facade, obviously, I think everybody agrees, the facade needs some work, needs to be more amenable. And, yeah, it's, I don't see where y'all have much choice, I'm just glad I don't have to vote on it.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Diane Bruce, Piedmont District. I disagree with the statement that you can't make a new building resemble an old building without insulting the old building, or words to that effect, that I read in the newspaper. The Circuit Court Clerk's Office, which is the building right over here, was built in 1979. The court, the judge, said we had to build it. So we've already had that happen here in modern history. And the windows are the same, all of the exterior is the same, it looks exactly like the Commissioner of Revenue's office and the Treasurer's offices. How many of you have ever noticed that you have chimneys on those buildings, but windows directly beneath the chimneys? You know, there's no flue line, there's nothing that could ever be hooked up and heated the building. But when they built this building over here, they made it look just like the two over here. So I think you can do that and do it well. I understand what Mr. Luke was talking about when he was speaking of intermingling all the people who come into the courthouse. And it may not sound like a problem to you, but if you had to prosecute a case, or even if you had a civil case, you don't want all of the witnesses co-mingling with everybody else. So you've got to have all of these little rooms for people to be stuck away in, so they are separated from all the other people that can influence the outcome of a case. So I know we need that. I am a little concerned about the way all of these little spaces are set up in the drawing. There just seem to be little rooms all over the place, there's no fluid motion from here to there. I have visited a number of other courthouses, and some of them more recently built, and they are more fluid. They are laid out much better than what this appears to be. This is just a jumble. There's a courthouse, and I think it's Charles City County, but I'm not sure, it's somewhere in the Richmond area. It's a lovely Williamsburg-y-looking type of courthouse. So I think it's possible to make something that is more compatible with the buildings that we have here. I think we just have to find something and adapt it. I think the looks of the proposed plan is just monstrous. I just, it's, I can't tell you how awful I think it looks. But others have said a much better expression than I. Trying to remember all of the things that I was thinking about as you went along. One thing you might do also, you might think about doing, is go to some of these counties that have added on or built a new courthouse in the last five or 10 years, and ask them, ask the people who work there, not just the judges, but the people who work there, what's working in your new courthouse and what's not working? You built it this way, but was that a good idea? Have you learned something with your new building that maybe you didn't need to do? Or maybe something else you should have done? You mentioned the drainage, and you said that you'll collect the water in empty tanks? What happens to the water in the empty tanks?
The concept is retain and then let it out slowly.
Okay.
Same as you do with a pond.
I don't know about ponds. I just thought maybe you'd have to have trucks come and pump the water out, you know, it would be something that would have to be taken care of.
Gravity.
So it'll still go down there. I also was in Orange, the town of Orange today, and they have a courthouse, and I'm not sure how long ago that was built, but it's a fairly interesting-looking courthouse. The one level is at street level, and on the back of the courthouse, it's at a much lower level because the bank drops off, just like it does back here. And it is built to parallel the street, not perpendicular to the street, but to parallel it. So it's very nice-looking, and it's not too long ago built, but it's more traditional-looking. So I appreciate all the work that's gone into everything. I hope that we can make some changes to the exterior, and I'm hoping that you'll get some input from employees as to the layout of the inside, because some of that, I think, needs some needs some attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
That is a good point. One of the things that we most recently spoke about with Mr. Vaughn was after you get to a conceptual spot, the next kind of stage, after you get past this, is to work with those users with some design charades to work that floor plan and tweak it, and see if it does have what is, if what they stated in their interviews is reflected in the floor plan, and maybe things have changed since then, or the adjacencies aren't quite as they envisioned. So that is a future step.
Anyone else to the, yes, sir.
Joe Wiede, Hampton District, and Vice Mayor here in Little Washington. I appreciate the hard work of the committee. I will not beat the long dead horse about the exterior of the building, I know we have a long way to go on that. I know, I was at the May meeting, and obviously have followed the documentation you guys have gone through very closely. At that meeting, we did discuss this idea of a smaller building, or it was discussed, this idea of a smaller building that just encapsulated the need for a new courtroom, which really is the essential problem here, right? I know you want to vacate rental space, too. And I think one of the things that's missing from the debate tonight, which will be very helpful as we go forward, is just that understanding of a plan, you know, your plan for swinging through spaces, who's going to move in, who's going to move out. I agree with the comment about the massing is probably the thing that's going to be most contentious in this and the sheer size of the building. Certainly something we spent a lot of time on in Rush River, is making that fit into the sort of fabric of the community that we're in. So I would encourage the further conversation about the exterior. I encourage you to look very closely at just how small a structure you can really function in, and present those details to the public about how you plan to use the spaces that you're freeing up. Because it does, I will admit, even having followed the debate pretty closely, it doesn't, I can't quite figure out what you're planning to do with all your vacant buildings in addition to building this very large new structure. So I think that's an important element to bring into the debate. Of course, the town, as we've represented, are happy to work with the county to get to something that the entire community can appreciate, and that fits within the fabric of this town. But appreciate your, all the work tonight, all the presentations tonight, and hope to look forward to working together as we get through this process. Thank you.
I'll take a stab at the, what the, what the plan is. The plan is, and I think this board has always been unanimous in the opinion, and we've heard from a lot of constituents over the years, that the way that the county offices are sort of spread hither and yon is not very conducive to a healthy work environment and citizens feeling like they can get tasks accomplished simply in relatively short order. Having the county administrator half a mile down the road from his employees is, is not, is not very practical. And probably one of the, well, I don't want to speculate, I mean, I wasn't on the board at the time, I think that in retrospect, it was, it was not wise. But we were trying to make do with what we had, and we were in a position where we had to do that. Finances of the county weren't good, and we had a lot of debt service, and we're not in that position anymore. And so if we, if we indeed know this, and we're not serving our community well by having offices in multiple locations, I'm so sorry, I have a hard time thinking while people are talking, you know, that it's not serving the community well, what is the answer? And the answer, I think, is the board, is that we have been committed to a campus concept for our county offices. And that means county administration would move back onto the campus. I do imagine that this would be the appropriate building for county administration, and that this would remain the meeting space for the Board of Supervisors and other bodies. We haven't crossed that bridge, but it seems logical. We, we have the rented space across the street, which includes the Virginia Extension Office and building and zoning. And there should be room in this building for those folks, too, who report to Mr. Curry. So that makes sense to have all those people together in a more fruitful working environment. There are also in a basement space that has one way in and one way out, which is, is not good. I think everyone can recognize that. And then the other space there is the Virginia Extension Office, and where exactly they end up, I think, is, is more malleable than a lot of the other working parts, because they are sort of standalone entity. They could maybe eventually be out on 211 or be in a different space, which always, you know, the process informs more questions sometimes than it does answers. And as we were looking at this approach to the courthouse, one of the questions that I left with is that it's lovely to have this boulevard approach and this concept, and at the same time, the church that we have on our campus does not look like that lovely old white church in that presentation that we just saw. And so do we need to prioritize the church in the order of things, which is not such a large project, and have that space workable, and maybe use that for the extension office? And also have swing space, so that as we work through all the renovations necessary, we are able to move pieces around, and then, and then have everybody in a space that serves them for years to come.
This project, Carolyn Butler Piedmont, and this project is very dear to my heart. It's really hard for me to talk about it. But there are three of us here whose families were here when this building was built, and we were involved in all of this then. That was in 1834. We were a new county, we were only one year old when we separated, had been separated from Culpeper. At that time, we didn't have any funds, we didn't have any help from Culpeper, although they were our mother county, and they did help us along for about 100 years, believe it or not, we shared things with them. But there were no funds for a building. So the people involved in this, designing this, were also involved in Madison and Page, but this was the inferior building because we didn't have the funds. That's why it's not a true classical revival building. And so I was in the hopes that what we did this time, we could do better, because there's a lot of money here now, you know? So, and we have funds, and we've got, we'll have a bond available, and I just was hoping it would be better. And what I see, it looks inferior to all of this. And so that's really disappointing. And I think it could be corrected by doing the classical revival with the columns, and you could even do that on a one-story building, and make it look historic. So I hope that that will be considered, and it's, so it's really the outside that needs a lot of attention to make it look like who we are. And we, we have worked, sweated, toiled, and died for this county, and it represents us and our belief in justice. I think the boulevard is wonderful, the approach to it. I see a little bit of problem with the parking because there are a lot of elderly people here, and I personally wouldn't want to park down there myself and walk up the hill to get here, so I probably wouldn't come to the meetings. So I think that's a little bit of a problem, but the main problem is the exterior, especially the facades. So I hope that you all will consider that and make us proud, not something we'll be embarrassed by. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Carolyn.
Let me, I'm trying to get people that haven't spoken, and we haven't gone to Zoom yet, so go to Zoom for people that haven't spoken, and then we can come back. Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak? Not seeing any Zoom hands. Okay. All right, so nobody there. Okay, now I'm going to come back. Would you all like to hear from people that have already spoken, or would you like to speak first and then let people come back?
Well, we've not been very formal all night, so I'm fine with hearing from people that have already spoken.
Okay, next round. Anybody wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Diane Bruce Piedmont, sorry I didn't bring this with me. I have a letter from Judge Jean Clements, who is retired now, lives over in the Wakefield District. She's not able to come tonight, she asked that I read this letter, and she sent along an authorization for me to read it. I mentioned it to Debbie, she kind of turned her head and said she didn't think I could do that, so I know that Judge-
We can inform Melanie that we've agreed we're having-
Okay, so, and I know Judge Clements also wanted the letter filed with the board and put in the record, so I'm sorry I didn't bring that up, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
No, I'm saying, go ahead and read it.
I'd like to know what Judge Clements has to say, if it's okay with the-
Well, it was addressing the fear of the current courthouse being taken down. That's what her concern was about. It's very short, I can read it if you want, but that's what it was about.
Well, I hope you'll tell her the good news, that that's not happening.
Yes. I thought maybe she'd be watching, but, "Dear ladies and gentlemen of the board, I acknowledge that I have not only a personal interest as a county resident, but a professional interest in Rappahannock's historical courthouse. It was my privilege to sit in its courtroom from time to time as a juvenile court judge from 1986 to 1998, and as a circuit court judge from 1998 to 2000. Although its facilities and structure are in need of updates and renovations, its value to our county is without debate. I urge you to find a solution which preserves this precious asset. Respectfully, Jean Harrison, Judge Jean Harrison Clements."
Thanks, Diane.
Thank you.
One more time, yes, sir?
Can I speak from here?
It's really hard for the people on Zoom, to hear you from there.
This is a point of information. You might not know this, but this building and the courthouse in Madison were designed by the same architect at the same time. I think his other work is in Spotsylvania. The other two are still functioning. I can't understand why we're having this. I think this building could be easily added on to. Like Diane said, the clerk's office, that second, what looked like a slave quarters, was added on both buildings. That wasn't part of those buildings, they were originally just one building. And like I said, the jail, they added new chimneys or whatnot. I used to work in the theater, I know you can make new buildings look like old buildings, you can match your brick, you can do all kinds of things to make it right. But I really think that, that what I've read about it, that they said that this actually, and I can't remember the architect's name, was his gen, that he, that this was in all the ones, the three that he did, that this was what everyone architecturally felt was actually the nicest looking building. So I just, but I really would like you to think about, rethink this, and not just say, we could build a new building, but give a little more thought to renovating this and making it into something worthwhile.
Thank you. All right. They don't see any hands, so we can go ahead and close public comment.
Any comments from the board? I just feel like I should tell Mr. Frazier, he's the chairman of the building committee, that we may need to consider moving the building committee meetings to a larger space.
Yes, please, everyone's like, oh.
Because we had a full house tonight, Mr. Frazier.
We'll be happy to answer all of it.
Thank you very much.
I just appreciate everybody that came out, and it's obvious that we're all passionate about the way this building is, but also the field of the campus. And the more input, I think, is really what the building committee is looking for, so that we can all agree, whatever the end product is, was what we thought was going to work best for the next 200 years.
If there's one thing that's clear, it's people are engaged and passionate about this building, and that is exactly what we need. At the beginning of what I see will be a long community conversation-
Yeah.
-about what it is that we'll do as a community. And I feel like it's been a pretty good start, and you guys have done a fantastic job.
Wonderful job.
The building committee has done so much work.
Yep.
So thank you for providing this for folks to get this conversation going. Thank you.
And it's a great pleasure for us to have Mr. Vaughn join us here this evening. We normally conduct all our business over Zoom, which is very challenging, so it's really nice to have you join us here this evening, and thanks. Oh, my goodness.
You going back to Lynchburg tonight? Oh, boy.
Oh, no. Watch for deer.
Yes. What is the, can we give people an idea of kind of what the next meeting time, what's happening? What's the next steps?
Well, the building committee generally meets the same time every month, but it's been, that's been bumped a little bit here recently as we're working around committee members' schedules, so that'll be announced before the meeting. We'll have to give due consideration to whether it'll be in a different place. The visitor center where the group normally meets is nicely equipped with AV to allow us to have that interaction with Mr. Vaughn, so we'll have to think about how to replace that capability if it's moved. The James Room in the library is a little bit bigger, still has that opportunity.
And would we need to do any prior announcement, other than the regular meeting notice to change the location?
We have not noticed the regular meeting schedule because it's been so-
Okay.
-happenstance, so every meeting is individually noticed.
Okay, yeah, I think it'll, we typically meet the third Thursday, and it seemed like summer schedules, it's jogged a little bit by a week throughout the summer.
But the intention also is to continue the quarterly?
Absolutely.
It's the-
Absolutely.
And are the quarterly meetings always joint meetings with the building committee?
That's the way we've done it, because that way, I mean, I don't think I should come up and speak for the whole building committee. Everybody puts in a lot of work and time and effort, and the whole point of having a committee is, is that you build strength in numbers. And we're, like I said, we're very fortunate to have a lot of expertise and devoted folks that show up for every meeting, and we'll furnish you updates as frequently as you would like them.
Excellent.
Special meetings, we'll do those. I mean, I sort of think it would be great to do a series, and it's always challenging to figure out how to organize them, but I kind of feel like we're due for some town hall style meetings at the different fire halls throughout the county. And that's a great place to get feedback on, on things, too, in a less formal setting that I think engages even more people. So, I mean, I know it's a messy process, but I think that's how you have a successful process, is by, by listening to everybody and being very thoughtful and making the best decisions we can. So I really do appreciate everybody coming out tonight. It's a lot of time that you all have spent with us this evening, and I, I hope that we've been able to answer a lot of questions, and I'll look forward to doing that any time you all have questions about this process.
Also, I would suggest that if we run into another thing where you think the courthouse is being torn down, please reach out to one of us and ask for some details, okay? So rather than getting all spun up. So if there's a misunderstanding, give one of us a call, please.
Well, that's what I said.
We're finding this, the silver lining in the cloud.
I will entertain, do we need?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion. A motion of second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
He's already-